Counselor Baker.
Here.
Counselor Campbell.
Here.
Counselor Siomo. Counselor Edwards.
Here.
Counselor Asabi George. Counselor Flaherty.
Here.
Counselor Flynn.
Here.
Counselor Garrison. Counselor Janey.
Present.
Counselor McCarthy. Counselor O'Malley.
Present.
Counselor Wu. And Counselor Zachem.
Chair.
Madam President, you have the quorum.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. I've been informed by the clerk that a quorum is present, actually. If we could amend the attendance record to reflect that Counselor Siomo is here.
Thank you.
At this time, I ask all guests, colleagues, and staff to please rise as our lovely clerk takes us through the invocation. I ask everyone to remain standing after the invocation as she leads us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Unite us. Oh thou who made us one nation out of many people. Amidst our diversity of race and tradition and faith, unite us in a common love of freedom. Revive us in a spirit of devotion to the common good so that we may open doors to the neglected and oppressed. Cleanse the heart of our nation from that greed which preys upon others. Endow our leaders with wisdom that they may stand among nations as an example of benevolence and exalted justice. Help us to make this land a common workshop of its people where all may find their place and work, keen to do their best. Hear these words of the Athenian Pericles. I would have you day by day fix your eyes upon the greatness of your country until you become filled with love for her. And when you are impressed by the spectacle of her glory, reflect that it has been acquired by men and women who knew their duty and had the courage to do it. And these words of the Hebrew Samist. Let the people give praise, oh God of all nations.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. At this time, we have a very special presentation by Counselor Zachem based on a very special play that we all got to witness. Counselor Zachem.
Thank you, Madam President. If we could have our performers and their team want to come join us up here. I will get started, though. You guys -- I know you're not shy because I just saw your play, so you want to just join me up here. For those of you that didn't have the chance to join us earlier for a very special performance of The Last Dream, this is a play that was written, performed, led by these young people whose parents are all TPS recipients here in the Boston area. And, you know, this body has talked over and over again about issues of immigration, about civil rights. We've passed resolutions. We've called on our congressional representation, on this president, to recognize the humanity, to recognize the fact that we have people who are in this country, many of whom have been here for decades, who have built lives here, who have a tenuous situation when it comes to immigration law. And that's not their fault. It's certainly not the fault of their children. So it's been a privilege for me to partner with organizations like the National TPS Alliance, the Mass TPS Committee, and the Boston Experimental Theater, and these young people here today. And I want to especially thank Juan Lopez of our team who helped coordinate this and bring them together and introduced me to this incredible troupe of performers. And is he not -- Juan was supposed to be up here, but I think he's taking his usual, you know, behind-the-scenes approach. But this, you know, this wouldn't have happened today without him. I also want to thank Jared and Danya and Vada and Emily, who were the team that helped put -- here he is, Juan. So I know we have a busy agenda today, so I'll be brief. And I know many of you -- well, thank you, Madam President. Many of you did have the opportunity to see this performance, but if you didn't, I encourage you to do it. And I also want to recognize our state representative, Adrian Maderow, who came from the State House to participate in this for the performance. You know, we -- I mentioned earlier some of the resolutions we've passed in this body, and they've done similar up at the State House, to stand up for people in our community, regardless of their immigration status. And that's great, and we need to continue to do that. But, you know, seeing the level of cruelty of this presidential administration, inhumanity, and hearing the stories, and seeing, quite honestly, the very powerful props and set that you all used, was moving, makes, I think, all of us think about more, what more we can do. And a parallel that was drawn to, for me, you know, was looking back at the diary of Anne Frank and hearing about the young people's perspective as an oppressive government singles people out based on their background, race, religion. And we need to continue to stand up and say "not in our name" and say "this is a country that we all just pledged allegiance to that stands for inclusion, that was built as a nation of immigrants," regardless of where our families came from. And it's important that we continue to do that as elected officials, as residents, as citizens, as activists, every single day. So I can't reiterate enough how important it is for you all to see this play if you haven't seen it already. And we're going to hear from one or two folks. I don't know who wants to say a few words from the directing team, from one of the performers, but I hope you'll tell us where we can next see the play and how we can support it. We also have official resolutions of the council recognizing three organizations, the National TPS Alliance, the Boston Experimental Theater, the Mass TPS Committee, and for every one of our individual performers as well for just sharing what I'm sure is not an easy story to tell, but incredibly important. And you guys are doing so much for your families by sharing this in places like Boston City Hall, like lobbying up at the legislature where Representative Maderow said you've been -- you need to continue doing that, and thank you for that, and thank you for being such leaders. I can only say I apologize for the fact that you need to be right now, but you're doing incredible work, and I'm proud to be here on the stage with you. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Seth.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, everyone, for having us here. On behalf of the entire company, Boston Experimental Theater and TPS Committee, I also want to thank City Hall, every single of you to be here, very especially Counselor Zachem, and also our friend. Thank you very much for helping us to be here. Very short about finding out more information about the project. Boston Experimental Theater is a very good source to find out about the next performance. Also, we're working on a documentary about the show that folks work here with Boston Network Neighborhood. That movie also going to be available, or information about it going to be available on the website, too. And just one more time, if you forget, the website is "We're in Boston, We Do Theater, and We Do Experimental Theater." So Boston Experimental Theater. And if you don't mind, since you said I have a little time, I just want to share a very personal story here with you. I'm from Iran, and I moved to Boston in 2004. And the reason I left my country was because my life was in danger. And I had to escape. I had to escape the country. I had to flee and walk through the mountains to get to the Turkey. And then in the year 2002, just one year after the one of the worst tragedy happened in this country after September 11, during President George W. Bush, I was one of the first refugee that I got my status and I was able to come to this country. Ever since, I've been following my dream, which is doing the theater. I went to school. I got married. I have a job. I'm living my dream here, and this is the America that I know of. A year ago, when me and my coworkers at Boston Experimental Theater got the pleasure and honor to meet these young folks who were born and raised in the United States, I shamedly realized that America that they are experiencing is a very different America than I experienced. And I was not even born here. And that's one of the reasons that we all got together and we said we have to just share their story. And thank you so very much for helping us to share their story here. And all we can do as artists is what we did, but the real work is you folks here. We really count on this, that this is not just a show, but every single of us here, really, really counting of every single of you for any way that you can help them. Thank you so very much again.
And if my colleagues would like to join us for a photo with this incredible group. You guys really did agree. You guys are used to the paparazzi. Thank you, guys. You did a great job. Thank you. Can I give this to you? This is for the students and these are the organization. Yes. You guys, that was really awesome. I hope we can get the word out about other performances or anything else. Let me know. Incredible.
Thank you. You guys were great today. You guys were great today. I saw you guys today.
Thank you, Josh.
I'd like to invite up Counselor Asabi George for a quick presentation.
Thank you, Counselor President Campbell, and I apologize to my colleagues for the brief interruption to today's program and to the agenda ahead. I mean, I think that it's -- the performance that Counselor Zachem brought in that we were able to watch earlier today was very moving, and it has moved me, I think, to talk. We were talking just after the performance about our individual immigrant stories, and I happen to have my uncle in visiting from Tunisia. And over the last week, he's been in town, and we've spent a lot of our time talking about his immigrant story from the time he lived here, when he first moved to the States, and now he's back in Tunisia, to talk about my dad's immigrant story. So I'd love to just introduce you all to my uncle, who is an activist in Tunisia. But here, visiting me, my family, and his son here, my uncle Lufi Sabi is with us. And I would love -- he does -- he enjoys a good political discussion around a coffee table or a dinner table, and I'd love to invite him up for a picture if my colleagues would join us for a group photo. Indulge me, please. Come on up for a photo.
My uncle is awesome.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Asabi George. Moving on to the regular order of business, now to the approval of the minutes. If there are no corrections to be made, the minutes of the last council meeting will stand approved. Seeing and hearing no objection, the minutes are so approved. Communications from His Honor, the mayor.
Madam President, would you like me to read docket 1046 through 1050?
That would be great. Thank you.
Thank you. Docket 1046, message and order approving a supplemental appropriation order for the Boston Public Schools for FY '20 in the amount of $218,019 to cover the FY '20 cost items contained within the collective bargaining agreements between the Boston School Committee and SEIU Local 888 Planning and Engineering. The terms of the contract are September 1, 2016, through August 31, 2017, and September 1, 2017, through August 31, 2020. The major provisions of the contract include base wage increases of 2% in September of each year filed in the office of the city clerk on July 8, 2019. Docket number 1047, message and order to reduce the appropriation for the reserve for collective bargaining by $218,019 to provide funding for the Boston Public Schools for the FY '20 costs contained within the collective bargaining agreements between the Boston School Committee and SEIU Local 888 Planning and Engineering. Docket number 1048, message and order authorizing an appropriation in the amount of $12,106,45 for the purpose of paying the costs associated with boiler and window door projects at the following schools. The Rafael Hernandez School, the Patrick Lydon Linden School, Donald McKay School, James Otis School, the Josiah Quincy School, and the John D. O'Brien School of Mathematics and Science. Docket number 1049, message and order approving the appropriation for $1,500,000 for the purpose of paying for the costs of a feasibility study and schematic design work associated with the renovation of new construction or a facility for the Josiah Quincy Upper School. Upon completion of the feasibility study, the city of Boston may be eligible for a grant from the Massachusetts School Building Authority. Said amount to be expended under the direction of the Public Facilities Department on behalf of the Boston Public Schools. And docket number 1050, a message and order approving an appropriation of $400,000 for the purpose of paying for the costs of feasibility study and schematic design work associated with the renovation of new construction at the following schools. McKinley K. through 12, Curly K. through 8, and the Mary Lion School for which the city of Boston may be eligible for a grant from the Massachusetts School Building Authority. Said amount to be expended under the direction of the Public Facilities Department on behalf of the Boston Public Schools.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Counselor Siomo, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. I rise to ask for suspension of the rules and passage of dockets 1046 and 1047. They both concern an appropriation for the collective bargaining agreement between the Boston School Committee and SEIU Local 888 Planning and Engineering. Docket 1047 transfers the funds from the collective bargaining reserve, and docket 1046 authorizes the use of those funds to pay for the contract. This bargaining unit is made up of approximately 30 members in the planning and engineering department of the Boston Public Schools. The two consecutive agreements extend from September 1, 2016, through August 31, 2020, with an estimated cost of $564,000 over that four-year period. Compensation and language items for this contract include a 2% wage increase effective in September of each year of the contract, change of requirement for sick leave redemption from 10 years or more of service with the city of Boston to with the Boston Public Schools, removal of evacuation day and bunker hill day from holidays, but allowance for members transferred into this unit to continue to receive the floating holidays if previously received in another unit, and addition of daily checks of BPS email account and work order management system. The supplemental appropriation that we are authorizing today for this agreement is $218,019. The Committee on Ways and Means has held four hearings on collective bargaining agreements in 2019. The agreement is substantively similar, following similar policy language changes, and the same wage increase schedule that we have seen before. Therefore, I ask for suspension of rules. And passage of 1046 and 1047, the additional dockets that were read into the record I'm asking to be put in committee, those are studies for the Mass School Building Authority.
Thank you very much, Counselor Siomo. Counselor Siomo, who's chair of the Committee on Ways and Means, seeks suspension of the rules and passage of dockets 1046 and 1047. I will take them separately. For docket 1046, all those in favor say aye. Any opposed say nay. The ayes have it, docket 1046 has been passed. For docket 1047, all those in favor of passage say aye. Any opposed say nay. The ayes have it, docket 1047 has been passed. And for dockets 1048 through 1050, those will be assigned to the Committee on Ways and Means.
Docket number 1051, message and order to declare surplus, city-owned former transportation department parcels with vacant land and transfer the care, custody, management, and control of said property to the Public Facilities Commission. This land is located at 40 through 50 Warren Street in the Roxbury District, Ward 8, parcel number 0255000.
Docket 1051 will be assigned to the Committee on Planning, Development, and Transportation. Moving on to reports of public officers and others.
Would you like me to read both of them together?
That would be great. Thank you, Madam Clerk.
Docket number 1052, notice as you see from the mayor of the appointment of Ryan Woods as Commissioner of the Parks and Recreation Department effective July 1, 2019. Docket number 1053, notice as you see from the city clerk in accordance with Chapter 6 of the ordinances of 1979 regarding action taken by the mayor on papers acted upon by the city council at its meeting of June 26, 2019.
Dockets 1042 and 1053 will be placed on file. Moving on to motions, orders, and resolutions.
Docket number 1054, Counselor Flynn offered the following order for a hearing to discuss public health disparities in Boston's communities of color.
Counselor Flynn, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. Madam President, may I add Counselor Janey as an original cosponsor to this hearing order?
Any objection to adding Counselor Janey? Madam Clerk, if you could add Counselor Janey as an original cosponsor. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam President. Madam President, public health is very important to the overall being of our residents, and it interconnects with many aspects of life, such as access to health care, income, and housing. Discussions with organizations and individuals in my district have highlighted how Asian-Americans, Latino, African-American residents of Boston significantly more likely than white residents to experience a number of troubling health conditions. HIV infection, diabetes, hypertension, heart disease, asthma, and are less likely than whites to access medical help. The Boston Public Health Commission, most recent Health of Boston report discusses these disparities. According to that report, African-American children are three and a half times more likely than white children to visit the emergency room for an asthma attack. Latino children are twice as likely as white children. The rates of infant mortality for African-American infants were nearly five times for those for white infants, and for Latino infants nearly six times those of white infants. Black residents are three times more likely than white residents to have diabetes. Latinos are more likely, twice as likely. There's other statistics that I could also highlight, such as Asian-Americans are more than 17 times more likely than white residents to experience hepatitis B. I had the opportunity recently with Counselor Wu and Commissioner Chris Cook to visit the Josiah Quincy School, where a group of professional scientists highlighted that Chinatown residents have experienced the worst ear quality than any neighborhood, not just in Boston but in Massachusetts. Asian women of any ethnic group visit the emergency room on a percentage-wise, less than any other ethnic group in the city as well. They have a very low rate of breast examinations. Those issues are troubling to me, to the city council, to Mayor Walsh and his team that have been working closely on these issues for many years. Chief Martinez has been doing excellent work on these issues as well. I know Counselor Janey and Counselor O'Malley have also filed a hearing order on African-American health, racial and gender equity, and the health care system. And I know all of my colleagues have been working on these issues for many, many years. I'm excited to work with them and discuss ways that our city can continue to provide not only health care for communities of color throughout the city, but a robust public education campaign as well to make sure that every resident has access to the same level of health care regardless of your zip code or regardless of your social status. Looking forward to this debate with my colleagues and with the residents of Boston. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Counselor Flynn. Counselor Janey, you have the floor.
Thank you so much, Madam President. First, I just want to thank my good friend and colleague, Counselor Ed Flynn, for his leadership on this and for adding me as an original cosponsor. This is a very important issue. We know here in the city of Boston, as well as throughout our country, that there are huge health disparities and that communities of color are hit really hard. Thinking about just my childhood and hearing about the elders in my family talk about, you know, diabetes and high blood pressure and all of these issues that impact so many communities of color, but particularly black families, that I know that we need to do more as a city to close these gaps and eliminate these disparities. And it's not just high blood pressure and diabetes. As you heard from my colleague, HIV, asthma, breast cancer, and how that impacts black women in particular. As my colleague already mentioned, we've got a hearing order on black maternal health. We look at asthma, we look at trauma, you know, whatever measure you look at, communities of color in Boston, particularly poor communities, are impacted, and we need to have a discussion to think about how we can close those gaps and help folks not just become more healthy in the city, but when they're more healthy, they're more productive in work, et cetera. And we know too many families rely on the ER for their primary care, and that's also problematic, that too many doctors don't listen when folks are complaining about pain. It gets dismissed. And so we need to do better to make sure that we're dealing with implicit bias as well. So I look forward to having a conversation with all of you, my colleagues and the administration and those in the advocacy community who are doing this work every single day, and just want to thank my colleague again for his leadership. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Janey. Counselor Flaherty, you have the floor.
Please have my name, Madam President.
We'll do. Counselor Wu, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. I just wanted to ask that my name be added as well and to commend the drafter and the sponsors of this. Just, I guess what I wanted to add to this was that, at least I often think about public health in kind of a health context of, you know, we're talking about types of illnesses, whether it's diabetes or asthma or this or that, but really --
And we know too many families rely on the ER for their primary care, and that's also problematic, that too many doctors don't listen when folks are complaining about pain. It gets dismissed. And so, we need to do better to make sure that we're dealing with implicit bias as well. So, I look forward to having a conversation with all of you, my colleagues and the administration and those in the advocacy community who are doing this work every single day, and just want to thank my colleague again for his leadership. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Janey. Counselor Flaherty, you have the floor.
Please have my name, Madam President.
We'll do. Counselor Wu, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. I just wanted to ask that my name be added as well and to commend the drafter and the sponsors of this. Just, I guess what I wanted to add to this was that, at least I often think about public health in kind of a health context of, you know, we're talking about types of illnesses, whether it's diabetes or asthma or this or that, but really it should be a lens through which we're looking at all policy decisions. What we talked about in Chinatown and the fact that Asian-Americans are experiencing 36% more pollution from traffic than the typical white Massachusetts resident, African-American residents 34% more, and Latinx residents 26% more. This is not just about the particles and how do we deal with the asthma, it's about how are we planning for transportation alternatives? Where are people living and what's the quality of housing there? So, I think this is just a hope to be a vehicle for fitting in all the other initiatives that we're working on and also making sure that it's a conversation about how policies that might not seem to be directly related to the Health Commission and their purview, but that are the underlying kind of social determinants for that get wrapped in as well. But thank you and so excited for the conversation.
Thank you, Counselor Wu. Madam Clerk, if you could add Counselor Flaherty, Counselor Wu, as well as Counselor Baker, Counselor Siomo, Counselor Edwards, Counselor Asabi George, Counselor Garrison, Counselor O'Malley, Counselor Zakeum, as well as the Chair. Docket 1054 will be assigned to the Committee on Healthy Women, Families, and Communities.
Docket number 1055, Council of Flynn offered the following order for hearing to discuss transportation network companies operating in Boston.
Counselor Flynn, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. Madam President, may I please add Counselor O'Malley?
Any objection to adding Counselor O'Malley? Madam Clerk, if you could add Counselor O'Malley as an original cosponsor.
Thank you, Madam President. Madam President, I'm calling for this hearing today not in an effort to ban TNCs such as Uber and Lyft. They play an important overall part in the transportation for many residents and visitors in the City of Boston. But I don't think it's anti-innovation that we continue to have these discussions about these emerging industries that government has to continually catch up and to regulate. I think we need to have a robust discussion on traffic, congestion, public safety, the ear quality, as we recently discussed, Vision Zero, the environment, consumer protection, and how we can better leverage TNCs to improve our public transportation, safety infrastructure. On the topic of traffic and congestion, recent data from the State Department of Public Utilities shows that there were 42 million rides that began in Boston in 2018, for over 115,000 rides per day. Many constituents have also brought up concerns relating to public safety and Vision Zero throughout Boston. Reports of vehicles speeding through our neighborhoods, often unfamiliar with the roads, lack of designated pickup and drop-off in key areas throughout our neighborhoods, double parking. TNCs like Uber and Lyft are also under the purview of the State Department of Public Utilities and not under the Boston Police Hackney Division, which currently oversees for many years, as you all know, the taxi industry. When we talk about sustainability and the environment, this additional traffic from TNC also runs contrary to our goals and creates environmental concerns, since the additional vehicles affect our ear quality, increase carbon emissions. Consumer protection concerns, price jumps significantly for surge pricing during sporting or city events. We also saw the recent Red Line incident in Uber and Lyft workers. I think we're exploiting residents of the city and the state by charging sometimes several hundred dollars to get from Dorchester into Boston. I'm calling for this hearing to discuss measures that we can take to reduce congestion, improve public safety, Vision Zero, promote consumer protection, encourage sustainability as it relates to TNC. I look forward to having a robust discussion about the ways we can work with TNC, but also, most importantly, to make sure that our streets are safe for our residents, especially for persons with disabilities, our elderly that cross the streets every day. This is their neighborhood, this is their city too, and we need to make sure that we provide the safest streets and neighborhoods for all of our residents. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Counselor Flynn. Counselor O'Malley, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. I rise to thank the chief sponsor, my dear friend, the district counselor from District 2, for allowing me to partner with him. My team and I have been working on a not dissimilar hearing order as it relates to the fee structure with TNC, so I thought it made sense for us to partner on this and to work together as part of the conversation. As someone who celebrates the innovation economy, uses the innovation economy, I'm like the countless number of Bostonians, TNC users who spend on average $150 a month. There's a lot of money that's being left on the table, and while we're not looking to make it onerous or more difficult for an individual to access these ride-sharing apps, there's an opportunity at the state level to really unlock potentially tens of millions of dollars annually that could go back into the City of Boston to make sure that we're able to support our roads, our public transportation, our infrastructure for multimodal transportation systems as well. So, I think this is an exciting conversation. Appreciate the District 2 Counselor's leadership and look forward to seeing action taken quickly.
Thank you, Counselor O'Malley. Counselor Edwards, you have the floor.
Thank you. Very briefly, I wanted to again commend the makers for their leadership on this issue. Also, to add to the conversation about price gouging when people are using your services, I think there's also a real part of planning that we should be having with these companies directly. I know neighborhoods that I represent, such as the North End, you know, we have traffic issues, a lot of it is because we have such a heavily commercial district, both our restaurants that TNCs are coming through and dropping off folks. So, one of the things I'd love to see is to be part of this conversation is a neighborhood-by-neighborhood planning for pickup and drop-off sites, so that maybe on popular streets such as Hanover Street, there's a pickup and drop-off at the beginning and end of the street, and folks will be walking there instead of having triple-parked TNCs clogging up our neighborhood streets. So, I really do hope that that's part of the planning structure as well and how they can be the best neighbors. So, thank you again for your leadership.
And add your name, Counselor Edwards?
Yes, please.
Okay. Madam Clerk, if you could add Counselor Edwards, as well as Counselor Siomo, Counselor Baker, Counselor Asabi George, Counselor Flaherty, Counselor Garrison, Counselor Wu, Counselor Zakeum, Counselor Janey, as well as the Chair. Docket 1055 will be assigned to Committee on Planning, Development, and Transportation.
Docket number 1056, Counselor Garrison offered the following order for hearing regarding improving services on Route 45 Franklin Park Zoo to Ruggles Station.
Counselor Garrison, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. As a rider of the MBTA bus Route 45 for over three decades, I've been fighting the MBTA for upgraded services. The time for talking is over, and is now the time to demand that the T sits Route 45. Bus services have a dedicated stream of buses to service Route 45 from Franklin Park Zoo to Ruggles Station, just like other routes have dedicated services. The current service on Route 45 is unacceptable and must be improved. We need to find specific solutions to the many transportation challenges facing our city. The MBTA has unjustly raised its fares to 6%, even though communities have vigorously opposed any and all kinds of fare increases. My sincere hope is that this hearing order will give the opportunity to find specific and concrete ways to improve the MBTA services to communities in the City of Boston. Thank you, Madam President. I ask for the suspension of the rules and pass this order.
So, that's not necessary, Counselor Garrison, this is been the rules. We'll assign it to a committee, and then you work with the Chair to schedule it at your convenience. Anyone else want to speak on this matter or add their name? Madam Clerk, if you could add the Chair's name to docket 1056. Docket 1056 will be assigned to the Committee on Planning, Development, and Transportation.
Docket number 1057, Counselor O'Malley offered the following order for hearing to discuss the creation of an Election Day holiday in the City of Boston.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Counselor O'Malley, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. I rise today to address a crucial issue for civic participation in Boston, ensuring every citizen of our city can access their right to vote on the sacred Tuesday in each November where we select our elected officials. Robust voter participation is one of the most important parts of a healthy and functioning democracy. Yet unfortunately, on average, only one quarter of Bostonians participate in our municipal elections. We've gone back, we've extrapolated the statistics from the last 10 years, and looking at all municipal elections, be it mayoral or council-only, the average voter turnout is about 25.1 or 25.2%. This means that nearly three-quarters of our citizens aren't voting. You go back to a non-mayoral year, the last non-mayoral year four years ago, turnout was, I think, under 13% or under 14%. It was anemic, and we actually do it better than many cities around the country. Even in presidential election years, where turnout is in much higher numbers, we don't reach the level of participation that's enjoyed by many other countries who schedule voting on a weekend or on a day off. Most developed nations vote over a weekend, and several others have dedicated holidays to do so. Now, some of you may be wondering where the Tuesday election comes from, and it was sort of designed in the mid-19th century as a day that wouldn't interfere with the Sabbath, where those who could vote, which in those days were white men who owned land, it would minimize the impact of farming and agricultural work. In 2019, it's an arbitrary and capricious day that we have a Tuesday only for our election. Now, I'm not saying that we should necessarily move that, but I think what we could do is allow for a municipal holiday. That's the purpose of this hearing order. We're going to explore how Boston can join other cities, states, and nations that make Election Day a holiday, which encourages voter participation and celebrates democracy. An Election Day holiday would change the culture around voting in our city. It would place a renewed emphasis on the importance of voting and civic engagement. We, as a city, should treat the act of voting as a civic duty worthy of celebration. Boston could do this by creating a new paid holiday or shifting the day off from an existing holiday like Columbus Day or President's Day to create a municipal holiday here in Boston. We have a history of local holidays that honor historic events like Bunker Hill and Evacuation Day. I can think of no better way to honor the founding of our country and the history of our revolutionary city by celebrating our right to vote. And this isn't necessarily a revolutionary idea. Thirteen states around the country have some sort of a voting, or Election Day holiday, and it runs the gamut from Hawaii, which allows for two hours for an individual to go vote during their workday, or something like Illinois, where the state government is shut down, or something like West Virginia, which actually I think has the best model, mandates that municipal offices are closed, and many private industries have followed suit as well. Now, Boston has jurisdiction over its workers and schools, and I hope that if we do this, we can inspire private employers to follow our lead. This idea would additionally ease logistical challenges posed by the fact that 56 out of 150 or so voting locations in the City of Boston are in schools. Ultimately, this is an issue of equity. Voting during a workday limits the participation of those unable to afford to take time off of work. If we want to give disadvantaged people throughout our city a stronger voice in our electoral process, this is a fine place to start. In this body, we know better than anyone else that local government is closest to the people and most impactful on their daily lives, yet only a minority of voters participate in the important decisions at our level of government. We can change that. This isn't something that's going to be our pie-in-the-sky idea. We could absolutely change this. We can't mandate what private business does, but we can what the city does, what our schools does, and really help create something so that Boston can lead. I don't need to tell all of you that at a national level, our voting rights are under attack. This is a way that Boston can truly continue to be that beacon, that city that gave the rest of America our country as it is. We can make sure that we go in the other direction, get more civic improvement, more civic engagement, rather, higher voter turnout, and a better government. So, please join me in supporting this and look forward to seeing action taken as soon as we can. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor O'Malley. Counselor Zakeum, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. I want to thank the maker for bringing this important order forward. I think he is right on the money that the Commonwealth and the City of Boston can do much better on making it easier for people to participate in our elections, whether it's city council elections coming up this fall, whether it's presidential elections, gubernatorial, whatever it is. You know, there is no reason, as my good colleague mentioned, that we have this antiquated just Tuesday. It's arbitrary. It doesn't make sense whether we do things and follow in the footsteps of this body's work, both through resolutions and legislation, to allow for easier voter registration, to do automatic voter registration, early voting, weekend voting, all things that are important, and nothing is better than a holiday. Because for us, for many of the folks who work in this building or who work, you know, in offices, on salaried positions, it's not a huge challenge to get either before or after work or duck out for a little bit to vote during the day. But for folks who are working hourly, who have long commutes, who even though they may be entitled to take time off to go vote during the day, may have to sacrifice some much-needed salary. So, whatever we can do to make that easier, to make sure everyone's voice is heard, is important. So, please add my name. Look forward to the hearing and look forward to making progress on this important issue.
Thank you, Counselor Zakeum. Counselor Edwards, you have the floor.
Thank you again to the maker for your leadership on this. I wanted to also note, not only is this going to impact Boston, but I think there's a ripple effect of the larger city and the Commonwealth taking a day off to vote, in terms of how we're advertising, how we're talking about it, "Go vote, go vote, go vote." You know, as you know, throughout the day, our population expands to, I think, over a million people who are coming here to work or be tourists. So, at the end of the day, when Boston leads this way, it's actually helping the entire Commonwealth, I think, get excited about voting. I also wanted to say that I think this also is a game changer for a lot of us at the local level in terms of how we're going to get out to our voters, GOTV, how, you know, many of us are doing it the night before till 3:00 a.m. because we're trying to push people on their way to work to remember to vote. And this changes that, I hope, and allows us to see it not just as a rush to the end, but a real push to make sure everyone's engaged throughout the entire day and not just really going after super voters or things like that, it's really going after all of them. Combine that with the leadership that we're doing already, I apologize to the makers who have pushed for early voting at the municipal levels, my colleagues here, apologize. That combined with this, I think, is really going to demonstrate that we're literally changing how voting happens and the culture here in Boston. So, again, I commend all of the makers and leaders at this level in my body, my colleagues, for getting out ahead of, I think, even the nation, ensuring all people can vote.
Thank you, Counselor Edwards. Add your name.
Madam Clerk, if you could add Counselor Zakeum, Counselor Edwards, Counselor Siomo, Counselor Asabi George, Counselor Flynn, Counselor Janey, Counselor Wu, and the Chair. And I'll just add, I saw this on the agenda, and I thought, "Go, Counselor O'Malley." And, you know, with early voting, we have heard from constituents and residents that they appreciate the flexibility because of that, but obviously, this is taking it a step further, and I also appreciate you naming equity. So, thank you.
Docket 1057 will be assigned to the Committee on Government Operations. Moving on to personnel orders.
Docket number 1058, Counsel Campbell for Counsel O'Malley.
Counsel O'Malley seeks suspension of the rules and passage of docket 1058. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. The ayes have it, docket 1058 has been passed.
Docket number 1059, Counsel Campbell for Counsel Asabi George.
Counsel Asabi George seeks suspension of the rules and passage of docket 1059. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. The ayes have it, docket 1059 has been passed. I have been informed by the clerk that there is one late-file matter, which in the absence of objection will be added to today's agenda. Hearing and seeing no objection, the late-file matter is so added. And just for a point of clarification, it's a letter from a colleague, yes, to why he's absent today. Madam Clerk, if we could read it into the record?
Thank you, Madam President. Boston City Council Timothy P. McCarthy, Council District 5, July 10, 2019. Dear Clerk Feeney and President Campbell and colleagues, please be advised that Counsel McCarthy will be absent from City Council meeting on July 10, 2019. I am on vacation with my son, who is home on leave from the military. Sincerely, Timothy McCarthy, City Council, District 5.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. The late-file will be placed on file. At this time, anyone wishing to remove a matter from the green sheets may do so now. Moving right along, I am informed by the clerk that there are two late-file matters to be added to the consent agenda. Hearing and seeing no objection, the matters are so added. At this time, the Chair moves for adoption of the consent agenda. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. The ayes have it, the consent agenda has been adopted. Any announcements? Counsel O'Malley.
Thank you, Madam President. I ask for unanimous consent to make a brief statement about thankfulness.
Go ahead.
One of the great, probably one of the best parts of our job are the people that you get to meet and work with, and there will be a big loss to Tim O'Malley as Will Poff Webster, who is my right-hand, an amazing guy, is leaving our office on Friday.
The smartest congressman.
He's been, he's an exceptional leader, and what a story. I mean, just a city kid, grew up in JP, went through the Boston Public Schools, Harvard undergrad, he's going to Yale Law School in the fall, and he's just been such a valued member of our team and a great guy, and he's like a kid brother to me, and I'm just so proud of him, and can't wait to see how his career continues after law school. We were supposed to have a... We were supposed to have a surprise-going-away party for him, but I'm not ruining it. There was a state legislator's aide who already ruined it, so please join us as we wish Will Bonvoyage tomorrow night at the Kinsale after work. So thank you, Will. It's very wonderful.
Thank you, Councillor O'Malley, and congratulations, Will. Councillor Zachem, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. I just want to remind everyone that we are having a lunch afterwards with the Speaker from Tech Goes Home, which is an important organization that some of you may be familiar with, that provides technical support, equipment, and training to families across the greater Boston area. It will also be catered by El Polone, which is delicious. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Sabi George, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. I request unanimous consent to make a statement about soccer.
Go right ahead.
So just congratulations to the U.S. Women for winning the World Cup. This past weekend, with my uncle in town, we spent a lot of time talking about soccer, which is the national sport of Tunisia, and the men's national Tunisian team beat Ghana for the first time in 54 years in the Africa Cup, also over the week. And trust me when I say we've watched a lot of soccer over the last few days in my house. But just want to wish congratulations to the men's Tunisian team and to, I don't want to say the women's soccer team, I want to say the U.S. Soccer Team, which happens to be a team of women who have won the World Cup this last weekend. Thank you.
Thank you, Councillor Sabi George. Any other announcements? At this time, I ask all colleagues, guests, and staff to please rise as we adjourn today's meeting in memory of the following individuals. For Councillor Siomo, Pauline Johnson, Eleanor DeLuco, and Colonel A. Daniel Delise. For Councillor Zachem, Arnold Sager. For Councillors Flaherty and Flynn, Jason Caneely and Tony Carr. For Councillor O'Malley, Celia Staunton. For Councillor Janey, Anthony Sylvester. A moment of silence, please. Thank you. The Chair moves that when the council adjourns today, it does so in memory of those aforementioned individuals. We're scheduled to meet again in this chamber on Wednesday, July 31st. The council will be on break for two weeks, but on Wednesday, July 31st, will be our next meeting at noon in this chamber at Boston City Hall. All those in favor of adjournment, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. The ayes have it, the council is adjourned.